All right, good evening, folks. We just came out of closed session. And Ms. Clerk, can you read the...
We can't really hear you.
Read the statement of closed session.
Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, each board member shall certify to the best of his or her knowledge following one, public business matter, lawfully exempted from other legal claims under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only public business matters where identified motion filed with the committee must remain for further discussion considered in the medical school board. That will call each membership to take their turn of interpretation.
Mary Brown certified.
Ellie Johnson certified.
Wesley Bell certifies. And Ms. Meyer is absent. The motions from closed sessions should be included in the consent agenda of the personnel report. Correct? And at this time, we'll rise and say our pledge allegiance together. Attention, salute. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's take a moment. So, please, thank you. This evening, this portion of the meeting is open to the public. We are here to compense the business of schools for our students' sake. The Board does want to hear from members of the public, however, comments have been limited to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure the meeting is reasonable. And Lincoln has been brought to the attention of the Board from concern constituents that even though we have asked speakers to limit their comments to three minutes, this has not been effective. We will therefore ask that all comments from this point forward be respectful of the time limit. If you have more information than can be delivered in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the Board. Ms. Rogers, clerk of the Board, will be a timekeeper and let the moderator know when comments are reaching or have exceeded the limit. If you have questions during the session, you may ask your representative or a school administrator for clarification after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. We have an opportunity tonight during public comment for, I believe, three different... Let me look again. Three different topics. One is the budget, after you see the budget presented, and then we'll receive comments related to that. Then we will move on to general public comment, if there's something, you know, expirious. And then a third opportunity to make comment regarding the superintendent search that we have started. So just to know that when we get to that point, there'll be three opportunities with those topics. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Subway.
We have a motion, Ms. Johnson, second, Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. Mr. Warder. A report from the student representative. Can you hear him?
I hear you.
Yep. Well, we missed him. Madam Clerk, donations.
Christopher Dennis donated $150 for the Kill banner in the high school gym. Our CSSA donated $3,370 for state travel for wrestling and the slalom football. Lisa Jones and James Debray donated $300 for the 16-year banquet and the senior trip. Kenneth Edwards donated a chemical scale for the science department to high school. Williams Tree Service donated 10 yards of wood chips for the horticulture class. Gwen Merly donated $100 for the JMU cheer band. J.C. Lormont Construction donated $2,000 for the senior trip. The PTO donated $600 for kindergarten registration. And the Rapid County Lions Club donated $850 for the senior trip.
Thank you. We will accept the donations gleefully, but during the consent agenda, as long as items there. Is there a motion for the adoption of the minutes of February 21?
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Uden, a second, Ms. Johnson. Is there any discussion? All in favor of adopting these minutes as provided to us? Let them know, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, votes no. Mr. Warder. The bills. So just so you know, we got a pickle. We got in a pickle last week because of the weather, and we still got to pay the bills, regardless of the weather. And that right goes round. So for some reason, we still got to pay the bills. And Ms. Johnson came and reviewed the bills.
They approved the bills, and you had approved them by telephone.
And we, through discussion of the Board, concurred to pay the bills, as it's the best thing to do, and that we would affirm that this evening. And so you'll also see, under the consent agenda, that paying the bills, and tonight we're affirming that last week, we paid the bills. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. It also includes the personnel report, as amended this evening during closed session, the attendance report, homeschool student report, and the 4H plus usage.
Subway.
We have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And a second for Mr. Uden. Motion by Ms. Johnson. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no. Dr. Blair.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have several things to discuss, make recommendations. The first, there was a motion, it was tabled last month about surplus of vehicles. The Board tabled that, and I did some investigating, talked to several drivers, talked to several people, talked to Mr. Hanover about what involves, and I'm going to make recommendation that we go and allow the drivers to use those cars with some stipulations. You know, this past year, the parts to replace for these cars that drivers use, these four or five cars, was approximately $3,600. The insurance is $400 a car, so looking at $2,000. In order to get the cars ready, should the Board approve this this evening, it cost $1,600 to get them roadworthy. Talk about roadworthy, I decided to drive the cars.
Yeah.
So I went out and drove them myself. We have a Charger that's a Rapid County on it, and has the plastic in between, you know, the front and back seat. I noticed something once on a segment of test drive, people were going to slow down. So I really enjoyed going up and down 211, watching people slow down. Then I pulled over to the side of the road and just sat. People come around the curve, they slow down. I thought, this is so much fun. What if Deputy Uden comes by and impersonates, "Please off, so I'm going to get in trouble. This is embarrassing." So I sped off. No, I didn't really speed off.
But you could have.
I accessed the back of the road rather slowly, and cars still slowed down. So it's hard to get back to the office. I was having a great time. So I drove all these cars, talked mechanics, some ball joints were replaced, a lot of things, and they are absolutely safer students and employees to drive. And, you know, when I looked at what the bus drivers do, now that I live here during the week, I get up early, and I drive between half hours. So I get out early, and I see the bus drivers out before light. You got to warm up the buses. Our children come to school safe, and home safe every day. So I think with the goodwill factor, absolutely, they deserve the cars, those that do it. The typical bus driver, ladies and gentlemen, makes $186 a week. $186 a week. That's it. Why do they do it? Number one, they love to share. Number two, we provide health insurance benefits, and that's where a lot of their money goes. So when you look at take-home pay, it's not much. So I admire what they do every single day, and I think it's the least we could do for a bus driver, supports them, to say, yeah, go ahead and use the car. So we have deadhead miles without students, 116 miles. Here are some rules that a bus driver and I talked about. Number one, the driver must agree to have school bus parked at their residence, and it be allowed there by the owner or property owner, and the bus must be parked in an area that's accessible to services they need. That's one. Number two, the distance from the driver's house must be closer to the morning first stop than it is to the bus shop, and that's deadhead miles. Three, bus drivers should not pass the school or office on their first stop. So don't take the bus, use a car, and drive past there. Don't use vehicle for any personal use or business. Only Rapid County Public School employees are allowed to operate the county-owned vehicle. And the driver must perform operational inspections, in other words, a pre-trip, look around, let's know if something's wrong, and maintain care and cleanliness of the car. These drivers represent Rapid County, and as a driver, they will say, that's an old car, but it does look nice. They keep it clean. That's kind of hard sometimes. Even if the ownership's important, you ever go through a neighborhood and see somebody waxing around a car, it just doesn't happen. So, you know, if it's not your own car, you don't seem to take care of it as much, but I think these drivers do, and I really like what they do. So we have, it's kind of a combination thing, if I could through this, and I have pros and cons from the drivers, and I could read, but there are five cars that I'd like to keep. And then there were four cars that we'd like to sell. And I think, do they have a copy of that, the Board? And there's, you know, GMC Jimmy, a town car, two Crown Vics we'd like to sell, they're just not roadworthy. We have enough cars for the few drivers that need them to, when they bring their bus here, they don't have any responsibility after they pay $30 in the morning till 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon to get a car and go back home. And I think that's fine. We will type it to miles, and we'll make sure they're just used for school use. So the motion last time was tabled by Ms. Meyer and then Mr. Grove, second the motion, to table until this month. So I'd be recommending that we start it tomorrow, be able to use those cars, and then get ready to surplus the ones after. Does that make any sense?
It makes sense. And so I noticed down in the interaction items, there's really two motions. Is it really, can we just collapse that into one then?
Yes, sir.
It's based on how we're going to manage those remaining cars. Which ones will stay, which ones will go?
Yes.
Part of our recommendations. Are there any other questions on the cars?
There are.
The cars that we're going to sell, we're going to do it as a closed bid sale?
Jim, is that right? Closed bid?
That was planned initially, and we can certainly do that.
Yes, sir.
It's still a good plan.
Okay.
It has to be at least X number of dollars. I guess we would say.
Yeah, what did we say?
We said it had to be over $100.
Yeah, $100.
It's only like $250.
I don't know when we do, if somebody comes in and they're not over $100, we have to keep using it. Do we take it to the joint?
I don't. I guess we'll... I don't know.
Drive it to Madison County and park it in their parking lot.
There you go. They have a private parking lot over there.
There you go.
It's part of our agreement, right?
That's right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next item, informational update for the school board and the public. Our former teacher advisory council representatives, two representatives from the high school and the elementary school, we have a first meeting tomorrow. Dave Nazer and Mike Sheffield from the high school, and Stephanie Beard and Jennifer Deal from the elementary school. They are representatives of their faculty and staff. They will be with you on a regular basis. It is not a complaint form. What it is, is to have a table at the decision-making point with the central office, because I believe, firmly believe that when you make decisions affecting people, they need to have a say in that and tell you what's going on. I mean, kind of like the bus drivers, you know, they came and talked to us about some things we didn't consider, and I think it's really important that we're a team. And when I took over, I talked about that team, and forming teams and staying a team, and I think it's critical that the teachers have a voice, because they're on the front lines every single day. Recommending adjusting the calendar, an always popular topic. My recommendation, after the teachers repolled, the administrators, and I've received input from the community, I've finally just made an exact decision. My recommendation is to add one day to spring break on April the 12th, and to end school on May the 19th. And I think that compromise is fair to most. I think the vote is pretty close if they'll make school, and not so close at the high school, but it was time to make a decision, I just hope. There is no more snow. It is springtime.
You're making an assumption, we use no more days.
Right.
Well, if we use no more days, yes, sir.
But we could have a flood, which we've had before.
Yes. If there are no more days taken away because of inclement weather.
Spring showers.
Yes.
This would assume no more school days, no more.
I guess at this point, we would be adding them back to the end if anything happens. That's good. Is there any other comments about that? That would be the intention during the third motion. Are you to adopt that?
Okay, so what I have is something for the school board to consider. This is a draft of a superintendent search timeframe. Basically, February 21st, we announced the search for superintendent. March 21st tonight was the deadline for the surveys. We need to get the information together to develop a profile for the preferred candidate. April 11th at the Board meeting, meet to establish qualifications and to send that out. May 17th through May 19th is to receive applications. May 30th, closed session to review applications. I don't think that's a regular meeting. June, interview candidates, and then make a recommendation. So that's something I'd like the Board to consider. That certainly can be discussed or modified. That's just the first draft.
It's, well, it's helpful for folks to kind of get the idea of a timeline, and I think it's, at this point, is certainly doable. And so the survey that was online, did we actually have already?
It was 122...
Really?
Actually, it was 96 for the last continuous search, and we've done much better this time.
And so here's the interesting thing about that survey. I'm not sure if those people live in California, or, I don't know, there's no way to know.
They have to, at the end, they're requested to put who they are, first, that member, new member, or other, and then fill in what they were.
Right. Anyway, it's a, it's an honor system, and you have to assume that they just could data in the...
No, it was, I'm sorry, it was set up so you can only take it one time.
One time.
Per IP address.
Right.
But it couldn't be on the same laptop, I think. I'm just to...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, there's ways to... Anyway, the survey's out there. We're certainly going to review what's on the survey. All of us have received either email or phone calls, or at-the-store conversations about what the expectations are, and this evening, we'll be listening again to any specific ideas you may have that you want to share with us about qualifications. Our goal would be to move and have something written that is a job description that we post in the paper and on the DOE site, and all the ways that it works its way out into So thanks for caring, and I guess we will just plan to use this, try to stay on this schedule.
Is this going to give us enough time between April 11 and April 17 to write up a job description and advertise, and expect something to be back by the 17th of April?
Well, typically, though, you know what? I was trying to remember how long we posted the...
More than 30 days.
I think it's 30 days of posting.
Yeah.
Which that would be. If we got the requirement out before 17, it would be out there for a 30-day period.
I guess my question is, would we be able, are we going to be able to write, or is Dr. Blair going to be able to write, the job announcement with qualifications after the April 11 public meeting? To get it out before April 17, where you say we're supposed to receive it?
Yeah, we're gonna, I would think that there's more to do there, so between...
There are more, too.
So we'll have the survey results, we'll have conversations we've had, that have to be interjected, interlaced with that, in order to write that document. And it can't be too big, because it's going to be place to places where it's, space is limited, so... But we certainly should be able to create something in a week. How would you think?
Without a meeting?
We may have to have a meeting.
That's my point. We may have to have a work session to do that.
Yep. That's a good point. So maybe sometime that, right after the April 11 meeting, we may need to have a meeting to just draw that up. So we'll try to put that on the calendar or something like that. It's kind of, find, find real the calendar for that. Just try to pick another Tuesday night, and see if we can publish one. Do you hear the comments? Thanks, Mary. I'd like the Board to sit down, perhaps you can see.
I'm talking to that. All right. So you move to these seats, so we can see.
I hope this cooler doesn't, well... Now? Everybody hear me?
No.
Now? Anybody hear me now? I don't want to talk this close to this thing. This is literally hot off the presses. Anybody? Can you hear me now? No? Can you? Okay. All right. This is my proposal to the school board and to the public, to chair members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. This is the proposed budget before it becomes school board's budget. So you go to the first page. I think what's important is a frame of reference. And I'm sorry that this is such a small screen. If you want to move up, welcome to, I'm going to read some of it to you, since you probably can't see it. One of my core values is stewardship, and it frames what I do and why. And I'm only serious about this. So stewardship is a responsibility that we accept in utilizing the resources of the school division. These resources must be used not only to support our mission, but to enhance, expand, and preserve the tradition of excellence while we remain vigilant to ensure that the cost is in the appropriate relationship to the value. Stewardship is the care we take and the steadfast commitment to the proper expenditure of public funds, and I have to really believe that. And that's the basis for this, for how we develop a budget. Absolutely is critical. You can, I think you can see that when I'm looking through it. I might walk around. You won't see that slide anymore, but I'm going to refer back to it. And what does that talk about? What is a budget? A budget, you can go to the next slide, is really, we look at our vision to empower every student to reach his full potential, and a mission statement through educational opportunities. The mission for us will be to promote a culture of learning, a roadmap for excellence, and the passion and character that leads to student success. This is a roadmap, how to get there. A budget is an estimate of how do we reach our vision and our mission statement. It all comes down to that. This is how we do it. Now, we want to preserve some things. When I became superintendent, I talked about preserving what works well, and here it is, folks, and it comes at a cost. We want to preserve our strong academics and our programs. We want to preserve our technology integration. We want to preserve the high-quality teachers that we have. We want to preserve our recruitment and retention efforts. Our student-teacher ratio, I so admire the school board, they're committed to maintaining a very amiable student-teacher ratio, and that's a blessing. Not all schools would just have that, so you need to thank the Board for their continued commitment to do that. Full accreditation, and each school has a sense of community, it's a family. And things are fragile these days, and they can change, and we don't want them to. Funding sources, the next slide. This really, these next couple of slides, please to get you focused on how things work and to talk about the budget. You probably won't remember this, you want to get to the good stuff with the numbers, but again, this is a context and a frame of reference. I wish you could see this, I comped that, too. State funds come to us in several different areas. State sales tax, revenues have died from 1 and 1/8 percent for the sales tax, we get money for that. The second one, the standards of quality funding is based on the ADM, average daily membership, the local deposit index, and per pupil cost to distribute that. It's not fair and it's not equitable. That's my opinion. Let me get out of my subpoenas suit and just talk about how I feel about things. And I don't think funding in Virginia is equitable. This is one of the things that causes concern. Standards of quality are minimal staffing requirements, and I do mean minimal. If you went and looked at every single school, 134 school divisions, they all contribute more than the bare minimum. We never want minimums to become maximums, never, because we couldn't do what we do. We never could. We wouldn't have enough teachers, we'd have to close programs. So with standards of quality, they say you have to have, you know, this percentage of library, this percentage of teachers, all this. Well, it doesn't fit the bill. So the Commonwealth knows that the government bodies, our Board of Supervisors, are going to have to contribute more, they're called non-mandated positions, to maintain the level of excellence we have. And thank goodness, our school board and supervisors have done that for years, not an issue here, which is wonderful, but it goes beyond minimal staffing requirements. Incentive programs help provide funds, GONSOQs, but we have to meet certain requirements and pay for them. Categorical programs, usually targeted for special needs students, we get money from that. Then lottery funds are used, like the K3 class size reduction, Virginia preschool reading intervention program, and supplemental lottery. The other funding sources, next slide, I think some of you can have that in front of you. Federal funds, the US provides money for federal aid to elementary and secondary ed. They're largely directed as categorical programs, such as Title I, and education for those with disabilities, 6B. We have local funds, generated by real estate taxes, real estate and personal property taxes, and other funds, like money for retirement insurance programs, tuition, E-rate refunds, et cetera. So now, we're going to get some numbers. This change, let's go to, well, there's the local, let's go to the other slide, people ready to see. Now, this is not going to work real well, so we'll talk about it. What's the difference in this year's budget and next year's budget? State funds, 2.9 million, June 9, 2,942,100. Projected this year, 2,966,000. It's $23,000 more. These are lottery proceeds per pupil based on membership. This is what the lawmakers decide. That's beyond us. Down in Richmond, they decide that, and there it is. The second, federal funds, last year, 587,783. This year, coming up, I mean, for next year, 543,145. Difference of $44,638. This is basically a nutshell decrease due to decrease in special education students here. So we don't have a situation to get the reimbursement. Other, 33,116 to 29,301. That's a negative 3,015. That's E-rate money. That's just, as, as it done with E-rate, sometimes more, sometimes you get less. The county, there we go. This past year, 9... This past year, 9 million, 89,098. This year, what I'm suggesting, 9,102,550. That's an increase in 13,452. Why am I suggesting that increase? Now, let's go back, when I go back at the first slide, about stewardship. Just gonna get involved here again, just being responsible and looking forward to As of yesterday, that line item was 95,550. That's what I was ready to come to four and say, that's what we need. And talking to Mr. Honaker, again, being a good steward of public funds, now let me underscore that. And I really admire what this division's done. We need buses, and part of this was, you know, we have buses that are 18, 19 years old, we can drive them down. We just lost, what, 11 quarts of oil, Kit Kat, in her bus, because it blew an O-ring, and they're older buses. We're replacing motors and all kinds of stuff, it's not cost-effective, so we need buses. So originally, I really wanted a bus, and I, and I needed it, we need to replace, ideally, at least three. However, surprise, due to our declining enrollment over the past five years, we were just given 74, 75, $75,000 in this year's budget. Like, this year. What am I gonna do with it? I wanna buy a bus. Now, if my lawmakers say, you're not gonna buy a bus, I'm not gonna buy a bus. But I want to really buy a bus. Now, here's part two of that. Being responsible stewards of public funds, we are saving some money. Again, what is a budget? It's a forecast of revenues and expenses, and you can't carry things over next year. You can't do a savings account, say, we're gonna keep that. You know, usually it goes away. Mr. Honaker, I'm gonna put the emphasis on you, because I believe in you, is confident we can buy another bus this year. So at 4:00 o'clock afternoon, I took that out. So, we don't need a bus next year, so forth. So I'm very sensitive to burdening the county, however, the payoff is magnificent with our students, so we want to preserve some things. So, that 13,000 involves some additional money, because I think we need to include our preventive maintenance program for our vehicles. It's gonna cost somebody to do a much thorough, more thorough job to make sure that vehicles on the road are safe. You can't continue to rail and cut costs. The, the next part over to salaries. You know, adding a new bus, we do that this year without help. Going back to core values, we have enough to get by this year to get the bus, so why put it in? We have money left over and say, let's find a way to spend it at the end of the year, let's just go buy stuff. No, we're gonna buy stuff for a reason. We're gonna do things that make sense to us. So if we can defray costs next year, this year, you don't ask for as much. That's my, that's one of my goals. I'm not gonna ask for as much as I can do with this year. Now, if we can, I'm in trouble. So, I'm really banking on the accuracy of, you know, we didn't have, tough as a winter, you know? So, Gary, I believe in you. I want you to be right. And he's very conservative, so, you know, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty stoked about that. The next slide is really a graph. Our local deposit index, Rapid County is .7392. What that means is right here, this part, locale, we have to put three-fourths of the money into our budget. We don't have a choice. That's what the state department says, our lawmakers say. Now, it's a comp, help, the local deposit index is a big formula, I can put it up there, but it'd be a waste of time. But this is what the responsibility is of the supervisors. And that includes minimums not becoming maximums. Let's keep our people-teacher ratio and our staffing ratios current. I mean, that's really important. So, our, our federal, 4.3%. The state, right here, the dark blue, 23%. When we look at the next slide, expenses by function, what does that mean? Where do we spend our money? What we'll go through, the instructional total is 8 million, 783,175. Administration attendance and health, 830,000, 640. Pupil transportation, 1,048,021. Operation and maintenance services, 944,000, 415. Schools, food service total, 170,717. Facilities total, 11,700. Death service, gotta pay back what we need to, 560,994. That was the new wing at the high school, plus some other improvements. You gonna get that out, and you gotta pay back. Technology, 291,100, with anticipated total expenses, 12 million, 641,062. When you go to the next slide, and again, that's gonna balance things out. Let's look at this, what I'm proud of, right here, the dark blue, almost 70% on instruction. I think that's right on target. That's what it should be. We should be proud that, you know, all that money goes to instruction. When you look at these other ones, health, administration attendance, 6% of the budget, operation, 7.5. Food service, 1.4. Facility, 0.1. Death service, 4.4. So when you look at this, I think, it all balances out. Well, no, it doesn't, what you're saying. The next one, what are the differences, you know? What, what is the cost of budget to rub her down? Let me go through those. VRS mandated increase, and again, not a choice, is gonna cost us 100,073 more. Group life insurance contributions, from 1.8, 1.18% to 1.31, is gonna cost us 7,837. A VRS retiree healthcare credit contribution is gonna cost us 7,234. Now, here's where, this is recommended increase. Increased salaries, 2%. It's gonna cost 113,090. This is different than the original step adjustment. Because recommended step adjustment, to me, that was confusing, wasn't equitable, as much as I wanted it to be, so Mr. Honaker and I worked on, let's give 2% to people now. I can't be all things to all people. Let's go back to stewardship. Let's go back to being good stewards of public funds. I'm gonna stand back here, when I say this, not get hit with tomatoes. At this point in time, the recommendation is not to give social office administrators raises, please their salary for a year. I can't be all things to all people, but to people that are on the front row, there every day, feed on the ground with the students. I wish, I wanna give them five. They deserve at least five percent. I wish we could give them five, as they deserve. I can come up with two, and I can sleep at night. They deserve five. Remove alternative vet program, oh, increase the bus shop equipment in parts, 35,000. Again, we need that, we have an aging fleet. We need to do much better job to grow the maintenance program, they'll last longer, be better shaped, be safer. I had a talk with mechanics today about this priority, and I think is important. But again, it comes with a price tag. With a $12,000 budget, it's not a huge price tag, but it makes some changes. Alternative vet program, we just could support that with a decreased enrollment, so that's gone. With, and I'm gonna talk about benefits at the end, with salaried benefits, that's a $97,000 position, that we can, we are able to recoup that with a part-time position, and we would do fine with that. The next one, change all part-time positions to part-time, I mean, it's already been done, but that's a saving, savings of 39,997. We don't have the need, we're gonna justify the need if they're full-time, we don't have that right now. And the last one, personnel changes, not replace the salary differential, 137,759. You say, what in the world is that? I'll tell you what it is. We've had some declining enrollment. Now, we're preserving our people-teacher ratio, we're preserving our staffing preferences and requirements, with a little less students, if somebody leaves, we sit down and say, you actually have to have that position. If you don't, you can decrease a little bit. So, again, being a good steward of public funds, you look at, if necessary, if we maintain our PTR, people teacher ratio, and we maintain our staffing preferences and requirements, we can do this. Now, point two, is when somebody leaves, sometimes, we don't hire someone with the same experience level. It's not by design, it's just by the best person for the job. We've hired several of them. Principal says, I made a recommendation, praise about this person, and proof is who we fired. You know who they are, they're wonderful. But they cost less than the person that left, because we don't have a lot of people leaving here. They stay and stay and stay and stay, and make a lot of money. Well, not a lot of money. They make a nice living. And what is important to me, is that teaching in Rapid County is secure. You don't worry every year about, am I gonna have a job? They're gonna cut things, they're gonna change the people-teacher ratio. That doesn't make for a good teacher. The teacher worried about the job, they're not in there for students every day, their energy goes elsewhere. We were really fortunate this year, I'm not setting for saying we have an increase in health insurance. Next year may be different, you don't know year to year. So we are very fortunate that we don't have a big jump on this page due to health insurance costs. Perhaps we believe that the Commit to Fit program is gonna keep our health insurance costs way down. We're gonna have healthier staff. It's a wonderful program. Schools would be envious to have this. It's actually critical we keep that going. Now, two final slides. One is a budget summary, just to compare expenses and revenues, and they match up. And again, you look at, where's the money going? Mostly to instruction. Now, where do we get our money from? Most of them locality. We need your support. We need support to maintain our budget, and also, some things we need, so we can't just continue to grow and stay the same, we need other things. Now, people think, all we need to worry about is salaries. The last slide, I think is an eye-opener. 12 years ago, 15 years ago, when I was in HR, the Rapid Assistant Superintendent, benefits beyond the salary were about 20%, 25%. When you give people benefits, not only does that help recruit people, helps retain our faculty and staff and everybody. So when you look at this, once you understand, it's not just about salary. An instructional assistant only makes, look down, 17,130. What does that position cost with benefits? 17,999. We pay 105% beyond the salary for an instructional assistant. Can you imagine? That doesn't go away next year. So as we are committed to providing really quality benefits to everybody, this is a recurring cost. If we look at an example for a bus driver, their annual income, 18,331, benefit is 17,000. 94.3% beyond your salary costs us in benefits. We look at positions, do they make a lot of money? No. Does it cost us yet? So for every instructional assistant, this is an average. We're paying 105% of this, above their salary in benefits. Looking at a teacher, it's about as drastic, $44,000 position, benefit cost is 24,452. That's 55.5%. So as you look back on stewardship, we look back at funding, we look back at expenses, we look at that personnel swing, we're heavy in human capital, as we should be. This budget is a beginning for us. As a school board of supervisors, we're doing half this budget. I'm gonna vow that we will work to reach our goals. I'm not gonna give up. I'm not gonna change. I think this is imminent. Tell you what, as long as it doesn't, doesn't go against my God, my country, my family, I can work with you. My family now is not just at home, it's Rapid County. My Rapid family, they'll look out for me. So, we'll fight the good fight, and I'm, I need to win. And I really think that we need to look hard at our expenditures, but also appreciate where we are, and again, what do we want to improve? What do we want to stabilize? What do we want to, to keep with us? And I think, again, people-teacher ratio, our staffing requirements and preferences may help make us what we are today. We could offer more courses, but we do a lot with what we have. I've been where we don't have that luxury, and it's devastating. I appreciate your attention, it's probably not the most energetic presentation, but I think it's a natural depiction, and I think we can live with it. However, other things I'd like to do, I've held off on, because it may come a day when a superintendent turns here and says, our insurance rates went through the ceiling, we need a lot more money. What happens then? So, I wanna be true, I wanna be real, I wanna go to surprise with what I know we need to accomplish our mission, our goals, to maintain the workforce we have, and the quality of programs for students. Just because where you live doesn't mean you shouldn't have equity for your course offerings for students. We should have everything we need for any student, once anything there shouldn't be where you live. Well, we're not a Fairfax, we're not Amoco, Richmond, we're not Alexandria, Arlington. Yeah, we're a panic, and we have everything our students need here, and that's what we're after. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate it. That's all I've got, sir. It's at least 10 degrees cooler right now.
Boy, it's hot up here.
I really don't want to go back to my cabin in the woods in the dark, that's what it is. Thank you, Mr. Honaker. Yes, sir. Is there any, is there any board member has any question for Dr. Blair this evening?
Are we gonna talk budget, or just about?
Any, what, any clarification on things that he presented? I guess, we do, I mean, we have an opportunity to have a work session to discuss this, we could do it this evening. We could wait until after, well, after public comment, we could wait until after even next week, where we'll receive even more public comment, before we have a work session where we tend to adjust things. Otherwise, we're just, we tend to rehash, we tend to rehash the same types of, of things. But certainly, you know, we're here to listen tonight, and then we'll be here to listen again next week, and we'll go from there. Alright, well, it's alright, then we'll just move on. It's alright, just move on.
I may want to act over here and comment a quick, but I have a couple thoughts I'd like to get off there.
Alright, well, for now, we'll move on. Is there a report from Headwaters representative? We're actually missing our headwaters representative. Oh, but Johnson's there, good, she stood up, great.
Our representative to Headwaters is on vacation, so I sat in for her last evening with Dr. Blair, and this is her, this would be her report. After-school enrichment will be starting again. The spring session will begin on April 4th and run until May 11. The planned sessions include making art, playing sports, and active games, a board games, and create play offering, golf at the schoolhouse dine, and a no-bake cooking class. Number two, scholarship committee for Headwaters scholarships will meet next Monday from 9 to 1, next Monday, 9 to 1. Next step is looking for internship opportunities. Please contact Headwaters if your company might be willing to allow a high school student to learn while they earn. Educational enrichment grant committee approved two projects submitted by teachers. One grant will pay for materials for Mrs. Vickers to create reusable skin seaming for her class. Another grant will pay, will pay for a new bus assistant and bow ties for the scholastic bow dip.
Bow ties?
Bow ties.
That's part of their uniform now.
They already look good.
That's right.
This will be partially paid for by generous grant to Headwaters. This will be partially paid for by generous grant to Headwaters from a donor who wishes to support the Scholastic Bowl team. That's all the notes I have. If Kevin has any more that he can speak for. Thank you, thank you very much.
Anything from M D G S?
Yes, we met March sixteenth. We approved our budget for Mountain Vista Governor's School. We will continue to send, our budget goes through, send eight youngsters to Mountain Vista. And maybe, we're going to look at a couple more that might be under the, what do you call that?
At-large.
The at-large spots. We've got a couple really qualified kids that could go out large as well. Also, approve the calendar, which is coordinates with all the other calendars to a degree. There might be a day off here, a day off there or something. Also, for those who like shrimp and want to go to a shrimp feast, it's April one. I'm going to be out of town or out of the country or something, but I'd be willing to provide somebody with a ticket. I can get two tickets to a shrimp feast and we can go from there. It's going to be held at Skyline High School. So let me know if you want a ticket.
Great. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Grover. And we have, we have eight students next year.
We have eight, we have two graduating.
That's what I was wondering, so it'll be.
We'll have, we'll have six undergraduates, two more will fill a spot, probably grade nine, I mean, grade, grade, yes, our ninth grader. And then, we've got a couple more that we're going to push.
They don't compete for that seat again, right? After you're in the program, you're in the program.
As long as you're, as long as you maintain a good rate point after.
I'd imagine. All right, great. All right, moving into public comment. The first topic will be related to any comments related to budget. And so, if you would, when you come to the front, if you could state your name and your district, and if you don't know your district, we'll help you with that.
Affiliation.
Affiliation. What's an affiliation?
Headwaters.
Oh, if you haven't, an additional affiliation, yes. And, so if anybody wants to come in this time? Budget topic. You're going to wait till next week? You're going to do it now? All right, moving on, the next topic is actually just the generic, anything that somebody wants to bring to the board that is not related to the superintendent search? Anybody? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Rachel Bynum from the Piedmont District. And just remembering last year's budget process, a side comment that one of our supervisors made about, Chris Parrish made about how he would be supportive if we were to invest in solar at our schools. I found two really encouraging things about that possibility, and I sent some out to Mr. Swindler. First is an article that's titled, "With Root Pop Solar Prices So Low, Virginia Schools Can't Pass Up Their Savings." And it has a list of quite a few schools in Virginia who have invested in solar. Even more encouraging is that right now, there is a grant opportunity through Dominion. It's through the National Energy Education Development Project. Three, I mean, there will be six either schools or educational facilities that will be awarded a one point two kilowatt educational program, a big grant, obviously. But the first criteria for eligibility would be, would be, that the school division would have to, would have to totally support the whole leadership team, the school board, et cetera, would have to support, the superintendent would have to support that. And I just think Rapid County would be a great, a great candidate for such a grant, with such a great technology, education program here, and with good environmental progress being, progress in environmental education being made. So I just would like to leave these, I've emailed them to you all, but the grant deadline would be within a month and a half from now, so it would be for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight year, but it could really change, it could have positive effect on our budget. So I'd like to draw that to your attention.
I appreciate that. You can leave that with us, Rachel?
Yeah.
Would we be eligible for Dominion, right? We are R E C.
We'd have to look into this.
Yeah, it'd be good thing to look into.
We'll find out whether we're eligible or not. I've seen other programs at the school board conference, for example, in Williamsburg, that support this type of thing in the schools. And I remember looking into it five or six years ago, and so it could be by now that it's a more economical option and people are more favorable to it. But it had some cost, it's attached with it, that it didn't, so six years ago, it didn't, it didn't float. But we certainly need to look at it again. And it's, it's interesting because it's taken from an educational perspective. It's not just an energy generator for your school, it's a whole teaching platform for students and adults that take part in this. That's a lot of promise. Thanks for bringing that, Rachel. Is there anyone else? Generic topics. At this time, if you have anything in particular that you want to tell us, or attributes that you're looking for in the next superintendent, it's an opportunity to do that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Traynor from Jackson District. And I have one quick comment, and I would, I am so grateful to all of you for using your microphones. My aging rock and roll abuse here, sincerely appreciate it. Thank you. I'm actually standing here in place of Betsy Beadle from the Wakefield District. She asked me to read a letter that she would like to be entered into this evening's proceedings, and I'll read it as quick as I can. "As a county resident, local business owner, mother, grandmother, and active community volunteer, I applaud you for your services, school board member. I know this is a thankless job and am enormously grateful for the time and energy you put into the work. I am sure the responsibility of founding our next superintendent will add to your already heavy workload. The position of superintendent is incredibly important, not only for the children of our county, but for our community at large. Hence, I am sure you are receiving input about the qualities and experience the people think are important as you begin this search process. Below is a brief list of key characteristics that I hope you will incorporate as you look to fill this important post. Number one, strong background in inquiry-based integrated curriculum, and a commitment to hands-on experiential and applied learning that is rigorous and nurtures each student's love of learning. Number two, commitment to an inclusive environment that provides extensive resources for children with a broad range of needs, including those who qualify for special education and those who are academically gifted. Number three, exceptional communication skills, oral and written, and the ability and desire to work with a wide range of stakeholders, teachers, staff, students, local government, community at large, and business owners. Number four, desire to strengthen and work as an equal member of public-private community partnerships that will enhance public education. Number five, proven fiscal discipline and the ability to advocate for the school's economic needs. Number six, ability to think outside the box and bring innovative approaches to problem-solving. Wherever possible, approach challenges with a "how can we make this a win-win for all parties" mindset. Number seven, if the person does not currently live in the county, they will agree to move to Rapid County. And number eight, empathy, humor, patience, and flexibility."
Thank you, Cap. Catherine, could you leave that with me?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Looks like I got here just in the nick of time. My name is Brooke Miller, and I'm a lifelong resident of Rapid County High School, Rapid County. I attended Rapid County High School, as did all four of my children attended Rapid County school systems. I'd like to stand here and give my support for a gentleman that I've known nearly all my life. We went to high school together, and that would be Jimmy Swindler. We met in eighth grade and forged a friendship that's been lifelong. He was actually, I'm ashamed to say it, he was actually the valedictorian of the high school class. He went on to graduate from University of Virginia, and I believe he's furthered his education throughout the years quite well. He's been a lifetime supporter and employee of Rapid County School Systems. He's demonstrated his leadership skills, his dedication, his hard work, and his general friendly demeanor throughout the school system. He's dedicated to the children and to the schools, and I think those would be qualifications that we would certainly want to look for when we try to fill this important role of superintendent of schools. He's well-liked, and he's a leader, and he's hardworking, and I hope you'll give him every consideration when you look to fill this very important spot, and I fully endorse him.
Brooke, I think you're in Piedmont. Are you in Piedmont? Where are you both?
Hampton.
Hampton District. Thank you, Brooke. Is there anyone else?
I was under the impression that we weren't to specifically endorse a person who might be a candidate.
So, you was interested?
I don't have a specific endorsement.
It's okay, yeah. I do need to.
Again, from the.
I should clarify, though. If you don't mind, can you hold on just a second?
Yes.
So apparently, I'm not allowed to stop people from saying whatever they want to say, unless it gets to be crude and rude and socially, I was just saying, it used to be a fairly rigid thing, and I think just in the last five years or so, they've changed the guidance as far as what we're allowed and not allowed to say, although it makes me very uncomfortable. But, we're not here to make me comfortable. So, advocating or how we did, of course, doing something in a derogatory manner does not affect anybody, right? So I think that was actually, but I can't technically call it out of order. It's fascinating to me. I don't even, I'm not sure where to draw the line, it made it hard for others. Anyway, I'm sorry to jump ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead. I forgot your question.
But you go ahead.
You know, we've been pretty specifically instructed. But, yeah, my name is Rachel Bynum, again, from the Piedmont District. And I hope I can fit, because it's such a big job, there are a lot of important criteria when we look for a new superintendent. Number one, high intelligence and sound educational philosophy. The superintendent should have a fundamental understanding that our schools are for the creation of a better future. Empowering all students as competent learners who feel capable of successfully handling whatever the world has in store for them as a whole. Learning should be for the whole child, not just the test scores. This should be true for students of all academic levels. Under bullets for those, I have test scores are important, but achieving higher average test scores and state accreditation isn't a goal in of itself. They should be a means to an end and not the end in itself. Providing a wide array of activities that will give every student in every grade the experience of being truly successful at school. Fostering a growth mindset attitude throughout the division that doesn't fear failure and embraces challenges. Another is rewarding and encouraging teachers who include hands-on activities, field trips, and extra opportunities for their students beyond S O L test prep. S O Ls again should be a framework for enrichment activities. Encouraging coordination of an overall scheme for student enrichment so students in all grades will have equal opportunities for enrichment. Another is using technology as part of a good education. I'm glad to see, as a parent, Chromebooks in school more and more, and this does open us up to creative in-class and online learning that can meet more students' needs, especially in terms of learning, being able to learn at one's own rate. For example, in the G T classes, they're using some of the Khan Academy things, and I do like that, I'd like to see that, maybe in Spanish and other things, someone who's willing to innovate would be great. Number two, efficiency and competence. Our constantly tight budget requires someone who can make the most of the dollars that we spend on our schools. Proven fiscal discipline and creativity is important. Strong advocacy for the schools at budget time is crucial. Within efficiency, I have maintenance, keeping up to date with maintenance, and positively engaging custodial staff to maintain checklists, et cetera, so the school is in good fiscal shape at all times. A well-maintained school communicates that we value our students and staff. This should be clearly communicated to any facilities manager. Another is a proven ability to follow through on tasks or appropriately delegate so that every job gets done. Within efficiency, also, the goal is excellent maintenance of school at all times, if problems with facilities are reported, one should understand and correct the problem rather than acting defensively and not filing up unusual requests. Also encouraging the purchase of durable materials wherever possible to avoid breakage and the need to replace items unnecessarily. And important, of course, is transparency with the budget and how all the money is spent in a detailed manner. The third criteria is open communication and support of school staff. This starts with clear communication of the division's goals and priorities, and then we hope that they will be met. One should communicate respect for all staff in both private and public interactions. Allow staff to advocate directly for themselves and their needs, equipment, scheduling, whatever they need. To encourage honest staff feedback rather than creating an environment where constructive feedback is automatically assumed to be against the administration. To minimize moving effective teachers out of their best teaching areas. And also to provide support in the form of staff to assist with mundane things like photocopying and specialty areas like reading. The fourth criteria is positive community engagement. This starts with good communication with parents and family members. Engagement with nonprofits that support our schools, and also engagement with local businesses who support our schools. We should have an all-school policy of communicating efficiently and electronically, which there could be a great deal of improvement in that area in this division. It would be great to modernize the Tuesday folder at the elementary school to include an email notice to parents when it's ready, to revamp the school's website to make it more user-friendly and easier to navigate, to promote the school's well-written newsletter. A lot of people don't know about it, and it's a great asset, it could be, could be used, it could be, could be publicized more. And giving teachers the support that they need to send e-newsletters home. Right now, some of my kids' teachers do that, and it's really wonderful to have that in my email box. Others, it's a crumpled sheet in my sixth grader's backpack, it's, I miss stuff. I'd love to have a consistent way that that was, that that happened. I'd like to make clear how people can be involved in supporting our schools and volunteering. I'd like the, also, supported P T O as an independent organization rather than an additional source of funds for items the schools could include in their budget. of funds for items the schools could include in their budget. I'd like to see a support of the use of educational enrichment grants by teachers and coordinating effort to let teachers know what these grants can be used for. Because teachers go from grade to grade so often, I think we could use these a little bit more effectively in terms of the Headwaters grants that are available. And also with regards to Headwaters, if a superintendent were to ask someone like Headwaters, "What can you offer us?", rather than dictating the offerings that can be allowed, I think that would set off a more respectful tone. The other important life characteristic is humility. One shouldn't use every accomplishment at school as an opportunity to toot your own horn or to diminish those who have gone before you. And nonviolent communication is important, being clear and not combative. Sorry for going over a while.
Thanks. So, Rachel, that is similar to something you'd sent to us earlier?
I sent it to you earlier.
Okay, great, great, thanks. All right, thank you. Another? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Beverly Hopkins, and I live in Hampton District, even though I live in Flotille. So, I vote there. The Tito's, who's across the river from me, voted Flotille, but we're a two different districts. I don't have a prepared speech, and just in listening tonight, just felt I'd like to add one thing. I know there are lots of requirements and lots of credentials that you will be looking at, and that's going to be true with every county. It seems like in the last few years, we've had a big turnover. We think people are coming, we're excited, seem like they're going to stay, but I think in the long run, that maybe sometimes that their heartstrings get tugged at, and they decide they're going home, or they're going closer to home. And I understand that. That would be hard to move to an area and not think about going back to where the roots are. But maybe one additional thing we should look at, and I don't know if we've ever had anyone from a local area apply, like we could say our district, our Plankton District or something like that. I'm wondering if someone would be closer to home, they might stay longer, they might be more involved, and they might be able to be here. It's easy to pack up and leave when you don't have a connection. When you live here, when you're compassionate about the county, when you love the kids, when you love the county, it's a lot easier to stay and want to do a good job. So, if we do have local candidates, and again, by local, I mean within our district that apply, I think maybe those people might settle in and stay for a while. It's a lot of hard work to continuously find a candidate, and go through, get somebody in the position, and it's a lot of time, and it's a lot of expense, and then they're lost. So, I'd like to see somebody that maybe wants to stay here and be here. Not saying that they can't move, but I just think if there may be more time to us as a Republican county, we might have a longer run.
Good. It's a good comment. Yeah, which district was it again? Beverly?
Pardon?
Which district was it?
I live Hampton District.
Hampton, across the river.
Across the river.
It is interesting, and having been a part of multiple searches, having a local candidate is not something that we've experienced, so it's an interesting time.
And maybe you won't. I don't know. But if there were, I don't know who the candidates are, the candidates are...
I don't know. I think everybody at Rad Hanan is probably too smart to apply for it. Did you hear the requirements tonight? Who would want that job? I don't know. Right, so, yeah, I appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, we're about to close our time. There's an opportunity again. Obviously, there's another public hearing on the budget where you have an opportunity. Last call. All right, we're set upon the agenda again. I got up since the last time we were here. Can I use yours?
Sure.
Oh, I do. Oh, I'm writing on it. Sorry. All right, we're at action items. So, 8-1 and 8-2 are going to come across as one motion, and it's basically to... For the motion that was tabled regarding the use of the cars. And based on the superintendent's recommendation tonight, I would ask for a motion in accordance with the superintendent's recommendation regarding surplus cars and the use of the cars by our bus driver.
I'll move that we sell the surplus cars and use the keep cars.
Use the keep cars, okay. I'll second that.
I have a motion, Mr. Grove, second with Johnson. Is there any discussion? I'm glad we tabled the motion. I'm glad that there was discussion around the topic and that we were able to hear perspectives that we were ready to move forward on. And I think we didn't have a full perspective or appreciation, and so I appreciate you taking care of that. All right, all in favor, let them know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close note. The next motion was to adjust the calendar as it was presented this evening, adding April 12th as another day off, and backing up the end date to May 19th.
Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Uden, second with Ms. Johnson, unless it rains.
Unless there's another day.
Okay.
It could snow, you know, it's going to get down to 20 degrees.
Graduation states.
Graduation states.
All right. So, did we record that motion? The motion is second. All in favor, let them know I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, close note. This order, is there any new business this evening?
Can we talk budget and new business?
We have a section here for budget work session, which we could do here. I was actually... Here's my thought. We could conclude our regular business, have a recess in case somebody wants to go home, and so that's not awkward, and then come back from recess and have any kind of work session that we have tonight, but know that we're going to be more than likely to have another conversation afterward after the other public hearing comes, which we would normally do anyway. So, we can discuss it tonight and after we close, after we recess, or...
I think it's more of a, from my perspective, it's something I would like to see Dr. Blair and the staff look into as a possible...
Okay, well...
But it has to do with the budget, that's why I asked for the budget.
All right, well, let's save it until after recess.
Okay.
And then we'll just tackle all those that want to... Is there any other new business? The date of our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is the 11th of April at 6:00, where we go into closed session. So, if you want to be on time, show up at 6:30, we'll be in the open session at that time, and you'll be that way, you won't have to sit and wait for nothing. Before that, next Tuesday, the 28th of March, in this very room, at 7:00, not 6, at 7:00, the supervisors and the school board will be meeting in a session where the budget be presented again, there'll be opportunity for the supervisors to ask questions, and comments will be made.
That's acceptable.
7:00.
On what day?
That means, I believe, it's going to be at the elementary school.
Oh, it's at the elementary.
That's right, because of the flood.
Oh, the flood. At the elementary school because of the flood. We've got to get that message out, make sure everybody knows that. Put us out on the air, in case they come here, but... Yes, ma'am.
On what day is that?
March the 28th is next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. When would the public hearing be on the budget, or would that be the same?
Same.
Same. That's two, both boards meeting and hearing.
And people with...
People have an opportunity at that time this year as well concerning whatever is presented on a night in Congress. All right, I think those are the next two meetings that we have, and we probably will be meeting after the April 11th meeting at some point to put together the job description for what we're about to advertise. So, know that that's going to be out there. It's currently not scheduled, but we'll put it out. All right, is there anything else? So, at this time, we're just going to take a, I'm going to say a five-minute recess in case you want to leave or in case one of us needs to use the bathroom, and then we'll come back in and go. We will have a discussion. There'll be no more action items tonight. There'll be a work session discussion regarding the budget, which you're welcome to stay as part of if you want, and after that, the only motion you'll find is adjournment at whatever time we run out of cupcakes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Be ready in recess.
You're welcome.
This is going to be work session conversations related to whatever it is that we want to set before the superintendent going into next week, where we'll be hearing from the supervisors if they're going to begin. Okay, any... Initially, Larry, you have a topic?
Yes, I did. I have for a number of years been concerned about our young people that are taking DE courses and the cost of those. I recognize that we have 51 kids that are taking courses right now earning college credits in grades, I guess, 11 and 12. But it's my understanding that the county that we pay for a part of that course, Lord Fairfax charges $215 for that course, we pay like 90 bucks, the amount that we would pay for AP class tests. The rest of that money...
Can you say that again? So, I thought we were talking about dual enrollment.
Dual enrollment. What our kids pay.
90 out of 250.
They pay... No, the course costs 215.
Yep.
The, we pay 90.
Yep.
The parent pays the balance.
Okay.
Okay? And that concerns me, that these are courses where kids take the class right here, and they're courses where they're getting high school and college credit. My belief system says that we should not be... There's a possibility that kids' parents can't afford that, and in some cases, they don't take it because the pride is there, they're not going to ask for money. And I would like for the superintendent and the staff to look into a line item and how much it might cost. I did a quick estimate with the 96 kids that we have that are taking DE courses and CTE courses, that a $10,000 line item would cover all the expenses. And that was just a quick, you know, just in my head kind of figures. And if we could add that to this budget and promote it as an opportunity for all kids to be involved in this kind of program, it would also cover the CTE courses that are the skills courses, the opportunities for kids to get certifications at Lord Fairfax, which are job-ready certifications.
If I'm not mistaken, Larry, we had that one time in the budget.
I have no idea.
Yes, years ago, several years ago, maybe when you were on the board.
But we don't now.
No.
Right, and... Okay.
So, that's what I would like, that's what I would like the superintendent's staff to come up with a dollar amount that we could use, and it would have to be a designated line item for just that. One of my thoughts is also, you know, there are no free rides in this world, and I understand that, and I don't know how much trouble it would be, but we would pay the 90 for the kids to get started on that, and with the idea that a kid would get a reimbursement that they're successful in the program. I don't want a kid to start a CTE class or a class that, and then they drop it in two days, and Lord Fairfax is not going to refund their money. But it would be a reimbursement opportunity for parents. That's a possibility. If a parent can't afford it, we could front it, and then they would have a contract to pay it back if the kid dropped out. It would be an incentive.
I think that's something we can work on, and I think it also depends on who is at all that Lord Fairfax has. I know at one time we leaned to it, but Dr. Ski was there, we could have done this without any question.
Well, we can do it now.
Well, I mean, I know, but I'm saying...
But we could do it for them. It wouldn't be through them, we would do it right here.
I know, but what I'm trying to say, man, they would do it for us, and maybe that's why we didn't put any more money into it than we did, because they would do it for us.
Do what? I don't know.
Make up the difference. If a student was at least a B student, they could go and not have to pay the difference.
Well, that's not the truth. They have to pay now.
One thing I recall is that there was, the reason we began to ask students to start paying part of this was, it was incentive to remain engaged, to perform well, because parents are much more concerned about college credit when they're having to foot the bill for some of it. And so, we were subsidizing it, but we weren't paying for it in full. I'm not sure we actually did that.
These are classes that are being set, they're here. The kids don't go anywhere. I mean, it's not a... These are classes, these kids are, there are 51 kids taking English and history.
Yeah, it's legitimate, college, transferable college credit. And so, the interesting thing, and I might have brought this up a year ago, and I've brought it up before, and my question had to do with, what are we investing in AP, and what are our students getting out of the AP program? And are they taking AP classes?
We have 45 kids in AP.
The thing is, I know it's aggressive, and that it's good because it's aggressive, but they don't use the word aggressive. What do they use? Anyway, sorry?
Rigorous.
Rigorous.
Rigorous. Well, they're both rigorous.
They're both rigorous, but the AP, they pay to take the test, but then the credits don't, they're not accepted by the college they're trying to get into, so...
Frequently.
Frequently, not accepted.
I think a lot that's changed.
I think, you know, we could do some research and find that they're frequently not accepted.
I think all state schools are accepted.
I think we better, we could look into it, because what I'm hearing is that they're not. And if they're not, and we're ordering down our offerings, or we're trying to carry too many things, if we get focused on one area, we can do really well in one area. Maybe it's an alternative. If we're looking for places to find money, and it's not an effective mechanism for our students, then it's a good thing to consider, you know, shifting how it is we use our money. So, my only comment related to that. Another thing I would say is if you, sorry, if you open it up for 10K, know that there's going to be a greater enrollment in it, not that I'm against that, but it's going to cost us more than 10K. It's going to cost 20...
Well, we don't know what it's going to cost us, because we haven't figured it out.
Right, right, but my point is, if you base it on the number of students that are currently participating, and you open that aperture, you're going to get, you know, a lot of more students participating. We basically made an agreement with parents that we will reimburse for an unknown number.
Well, I'd be willing to try and raise money for unknown numbers of high-quality education.
I think what Larry is really...
We're going to document Larry's volunteerism and say, wait, hang on.
Well, I think what Larry is really trying to get across, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, there are some kids that would be more into it if they could afford it, and that we need to do it. I agree with that.
But if we look at it and see, I mean, we're not going to vote on it, but the point is, I think if youngsters know that this option is there, and I could cost them $115 or $120 a course, it might open things up a little bit more. And we start talking about that in grade eight, grade nine, grade 10, and just kind of raise that tide, you know, that rising tide raises all boats.
That's a good point.
But I, you know, we're a public school, and I think we ought to be, you know, there are some school systems that are charging kids to play softball, you know, and basketball.
That's true.
And I just can't imagine us doing anything like that.
a lot more students participating in the call. We basically made an agreement with parents that we will reimburse for an unknown number.
Well, I'd be willing to try and raise money for unknown numbers of high-quality education.
I think what Larry is really...
We're going to document Larry's volunteerism and say, wait, hang on.
I think what Larry is really trying to get across is I don't agree with him wholeheartedly. There are some kids that would be more into it if they could afford it and that we need to do it. I agree with that.
But if we look at it and see, I mean, we're not going to vote on it, but the point is, I think if youngsters know that this option is there and it'll cost them $115 or $120 a course, it might open things up a little bit more. And we start talking about that in grade eight, grade nine, grade 10. And just kind of raise that tide, you know, that rising tide raises all boats.
That's a good point.
But I, you know, we're a public school and I think we ought to be, you know, there are some school systems that are charging kids to play softball, you know, and basketball.
That's true.
And I just can't imagine us doing anything like that.
Well, couldn't we add that like a $10,000 amount to the bottom line of that budget? I mean, and then that's not really asking the county, you didn't have that, we weren't asking additional.
Well, right now, we're asking for 13.
Like 13,000 and then like 23,000.
Well, that's fine. And I would be more than happy to say to the county, that's the needed dollar.
Well...
And then let them cut it.
So at this point, though, we're asking the superintendent to make an evaluation of what would this cost us? And that's what we'll get back. Is that all right? Does that make sense? And so what if my data is wrong and I think AP's not a good use of their time? Is there any way we can investigate how effective that really is for our students and if it's really being accepted by the colleges that they end up going to? What percentage of them? I'd like to know that because I think it's not...
I think it'd be worth a discussion, but I'd be hard-pressed to do away with AP personally, just my own personal thing. We've got 45 kids in AP right now.
So you're not the only ones going to get hard-pressed. I get hard-pressed too.
That's true.
We just get to share some hard-press.
That's right. That's good.
Full card.
That's what discussion is all about.
All right, so, good, so two items, sort of conversation. Is there any other?
If he can get it within the $10,000, he can add it to the budget. Is that where we're going from here?
We don't know that.
I think this is...
Well, I was going to say if he can within...
Well, we can talk about that next week.
The other thing to remember is, so next week is the superintendent presents the superintendent's budget again. And then there's more comments and then we have a second chance to go through and say, all right, based on comments, based on our work sessions, what do we want to present going forward?
If Dr. Blair could get that dollar amount and put it in as an addendum to the budget when they present, when he presents it to the county board, the board of supervisors, would that be appropriate?
I don't know how that would work in this amount of...
Now, I think we're going to put it in next week, if we're going to put it in.
My response would be that I could give information, look at options for the budget next week.
Yeah.
I mean, the point is, if we ever live, then would we want to give up? If that happens, then we go back to prioritizing what the needs are. Does that replace something else? If you realize the 22nd of August, that we're not going to get that level of funding, is that be the next step for the board to make a decision on what we preserve? What are we really all about? Are we going to maintain that here? Something we have to go? And what is that we have to go? Would that be something that I work hard to make a recommendation, give you options?
All priorities.
But I do like the reimbursement-based, performance-based reimbursement idea if we're going to do it at all.
I agree with that.
Well, I do too. I agree with that as well.
That's going to be a headache for the high school treasurer, but so be it.
It is going to be an administrative headache for somebody.
Yeah. Well, I would assume it comes out of the high school treasurer.
Anything else? Right, it's a lot of research.
You can if you don't. Try. I think everybody got a copy of the CTE stuff and the number of kids that, according to guidance, haven't taken CTE because of the expense of it. You know, and that's a problem. We ought to be able to make some kind of a contract with Lord Fairfax that says our kids are going to get CTE for X number of dollars.
I think we can do that, Larry. I don't have any problem with working the law books, Lord Fairfax along that line because I've done that and I know what you can get over there if you have the right...
You know the right people.
That's right.
I think Rosa's still over there.
Maybe Mrs. Johnson and I are going to take a lunch break.
Rosa's still on the board there too.
Yeah, Rosa's still there.
No, she's on foundation. She's on the board.
Oh, she's on the foundation.
Well, I tell you who is.
The one down across from you.
Yeah, Paula Hollis.
And also on the foundation...
You've got to work these connections.
With Rosa is Amanda that was on Headwaters, I think. She's on the foundation board.
She's on the foundation board.
That's what I'm saying.
I think, yeah, Larry's volunteered a lot. I think trying to get reduced tuition would be probably the first target.
Well, let's see what it's going to cost us. And after that, we can go after something else.
All right. Is there anything else? Thank you, Dr. Blair, for entertaining that. Thanks for your presentation tonight. Appreciate that. I like summing things up. And we're going to be in here next week and we'll...
Yeah, we're going to be at the elementary.
Oh, we're at the elementary?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that. And hopefully, you know, that mic was not working well for us tonight. Hopefully, whatever sound equipment we take down there, we can test.
They have the room.
Sir?
They have the room.
Yeah, they have the room. Just, we just got to test.
Probably better than the high schools, right?
It answers, yes.
Karen Ellis says so.
All right. Is there a motion adjourned? A motion from Mr. Grove, second of Ms. Johnson. Did you second that? She seconded that. All in favor? Aye.
Somebody come by and...
Sports close. Thanks. We've got cupcakes on the way. Grab one before you go.
Thank you.